Welcome to the Lawrence City Commission Candidate Forum. My name is Chikani Thager and I am the Chair of the Political Action Committee of the Lawrence Branch NWA CP. And I want to give a special thank you to the League of Women Voters of Lawrence and Douglas County and to the Women for Kansas Lawrence Douglas County Chapter for partnering with the NWA CP and hosting this forum. Because our organizations are nonpartisan, we do not endorse candidates. Our political activities are focused on voter registration, voter education, and most importantly, voter turnout at the polls. That's where we're really going there. So we appreciate the support of the Lawrence Public Library. The questions we will ask were developed by members of the NWA CP, the League of Women Voters, and Women for Kansas. The candidates know what topics we plan to address this morning, but they did not receive the questions in advance. There will be no additional questions from the audience. Instead, we've asked the candidates to stay after the formal question and answer period so you can visit with them. Now I'm going to turn it over to our moderator. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dustin Stumblin-Bear. Let me thank you candidates for being here also.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Dustin Stumblin-Bear. I also serve on the Political Action Committee of the NWA CP. I'll be moderating our forum this morning. The candidates will have one minute to answer the first question, then two minutes to answer the remaining questions. Our timekeeper, Lois Lopes, sitting in the front row, will let each candidate know when there are 20 seconds left to respond and then when the time is up. We respectfully ask that the candidates stay within the time allotted for each question. Our candidates for the Lawrence City Commission are Mike Courtney, Bart Littlejohn, Christine Polian, and Bob Schum. We will rotate who answers each question first. Our first question, in one minute, please tell us why you are running for the Lawrence City Commission and what skills you have that would make you an effective commissioner. We will begin with Mr. Courtney.
One minute. For me, I have a 25-year IT career. I've worked for companies like Nvidia. Is this the first one you can hear your day?
Twenty-four.
Okay. I've worked 25-year IT career. I've worked for companies like Nvidia, IBM, for companies like Systems. I've worked for five startups and had two successful exits. On top of that, I have managed six, seven, eight bigger projects. In terms of this campaign, I've got three issues that I focus on, which is housing affordability, budget, and direct center fees. And so hopefully we'll be able to talk about each one of those in detail.
All right. Okay. Yeah, so I've lived, my name is Bart Littlejohn. I've lived in this community since 1995, one of those that went to University of Kansas and loved Lawrence so much, never left. Married a local girl, decided to stick around and decided to get involved. So joined my neighborhood association, became the president of the Neighborhood Association. Also decided to get involved with the city, became Chair of the Arts and Recreation Advisory Board, also participated in the Neighborhood, I'm sorry, County Health and Food Plan, formulation of that. So that led to me running for city commission and now serving on the city commission. And what I'm concentrating on is continuing what I started out with, which was housing and houselessness, economic development, and also infrastructure. Basically, my campaign is, I said it, I meant it, and I'm doing it.
Christine?
Hi, Christine Polian. I have been around Lawrence for about 30 years. I've lived here 10 of those. I moved back in '21 with my two young children. And I want to stay here, raise them through high school, eventually get them out of my home with the most love. I have been in local government for 22 years. My last position was the Housing Authority here. I was CFO there. Resigned that position in December and was kind of doing a reset and decided to do this. I think I've noticed a few things that maybe we can improve upon. I think my finance expertise, city management expertise can help us in that.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Bob Schum and I'm running for the city commission. I have served in the past all years on the city commission, three terms as Mayor. I have 45 years of business experience in the community, raising, operating and owning restaurants. Some of the labels were Nash Street, Ellie Buffle, Bob's Smokehouse. Have four children, seven grandchildren, married to a wonderful wife, Sandra. I've lived here since I was 17 and never left, so my whole adult life I've had there. Why I'm running this time is because I see some things that I think I can improve on with my experience. For sure, the budget, the budget is a very sore spot with rising property taxes each year.
Thank you all of our candidates. You will now have two minutes to answer the remaining questions. Our second question is, what is your plan for increasing the stock of permanently affordable housing for low and middle-income residents? We will begin with Mr. Littlejohn.
In terms of affordable housing, when I first ran, what I wanted to do was make it available, affordable, accessible, and I want to continue to do that. And I think we've had some great successes, especially in the organization, planning a place for everyone in conjunction with the county, neighborhood organizations, and also just other people willing to help. Especially want to shout out Justice Matters, they've been at its beginning and have always showed up and go ahead and support that. And as far as I can recall, during this candidate run that we've been on, I also just don't want to forget about renters. A lot of people are talking about renters and making space for them and making sure that they can have affordable places as well. So I want to make sure that we go ahead and do that. We've made a lot of strides, but we still have a way to go. I know that in terms of houselessness, we may have some successes. We've had a 63% reduction in one-time count for this year, last year. 81% of those have been Lawrence residents. So much so that Columbia, Missouri has shouted us out and now begged, said, "Why can't we be more like Lawrence?" So Columbia, Missouri, that's, that's a lot. So not only that, but I've been in conferences across the nation and region where people have come up to me and said, "How can we do what you guys want?" So we're doing a great job in that area. Also in terms of housing, yeah, we, last year we added 400 affordable units, the year before we added 400 more. So we're doing a great job of getting that lower in affordable unit housing for renters and things of that sort. So I want to attack the middle, the missing middle of workforce housing. That's my goal coming up here now. We're going to go ahead and plan to do that with our affordable housing incentive policy. Hopefully we can bring some private developers to the table and really add some gravity to it, get some momentum.
Christine?
This is definitely a hot topic for all of us. We've noticed that we're seeing a lot of multifamily go in and not single family. And the only way to keep folks here and let our kids stay here and hopefully our grandkids stay here is for them to be able to get into housing. You've got two different types of affordable housing. You've got the workforce housing, as Bart mentioned, that would be the middle gap, and then you've got your subsidized. We do have a lot of resources for subsidized housing. I will tell you the best way to get, you know, for the middle folks, the best way to get affordable housing is to increase the housing inventory. But builders can't build homes for less than $300,000 probably today, so it's really difficult. So we could do a P3, a public-private partnership. There's options out there to build affordable housing. They do it all over the country. We, they're rolling out, the city, we are rolling out an affordable housing incentive plan, which will hopefully get builders in here to get the cost of those homes down. And then Mike Courtney's got a great idea that he'll talk about here in a minute, but definitely something we need to attack, but it's not something that you can give one answer to. Lot of partners already in play and we're going to continue doing that. I know it's very important.
Yeah, Bob Schum, we need to build more houses. All right, we need to build more houses, period. I remember when we built between 250 and 300 houses a year and they were bought up right away because they were in the market. Market was good, the price point was good, and we drifted away from that. We're at about 40 or so houses a year now and that's pushing the price up substantially. Supply-demand price, that's an econ 101. What we need to do, in addition to infill development, we need to have some large areas available for builders so they can build to scale. We need annexation on the west and on the east. We need large plots of land so they can go in and build 30 or 40 houses, build economically and build multiple units that we can use. I think we should incentivize the builders to build a certain price point home, like in the $250,000 range. And one of the ideas I floated the other day at the builders forum was perhaps we could give a free water tap and then a free building permit, which would equal around $10,000 per builder, per building. And I do believe that would incentivize building those, that style home at that price point. There's lots we can do. There's other incentives too that we can work on, but we just got to get, we got to get with it. We got to make stuff happen. It's not happening and it's causing a lot of pain in terms of the price of housing and the price of housing translates to more, more price of housing, higher taxes. So that's my plan. Mike, just get through. Thank you.
Mike?
When I get into this race, I ask my friends' kids, one just graduated from Alabama, to make sure that you're aware of, can you, are you going to buy a house in town? And they looked at me and left. There was a study that took place before the pandemic and they said, "What can somebody use a first-time homeowner in town for?" It was $125 to $265. Right now in town, on the market, the average is $338 and one of them sold at $370. So there's an entire generation of the rent scene who do not have the ability to buy a home and go down the rent scene. So one idea that I brought to this campaign is this idea around buying their home. This is a home that's built off-site in a factory, they're not stick-built on-site. They can be 30% to 40% cheaper than what is capable right now. With tariffs increasing for Canada and other things like that, the price of a home is going to go up. So we need to think differently if we're going to keep these residents and our children in the community. The other thing I would say is Wichita State said that Lawrence should be the biggest growing city by the end of the century. As, you know, as was said, we only did 54 housing cohorts last year. We're at like 20-something right now. We're not going to reach that number of being the fastest growing city in town. Their study said the only thing that will stop that is if local politics gets in the way. So we need to think differently. I brought in eight people from Nebraska Furniture Mart, people who have built large water homes in Kansas City, and we're talking right now with the Planning Commission, Planning Department, about what 800 large water homes would look like in town right now. So I'm working on that, doing that, not getting anything out of it, but doing that to show the community what I'd be like as of here. So there are options, we have to, we have to look at them, and there are ways that other states like Arizona, Colorado, and Texas are saving money to keep residents in these little towns with large water homes as an option.
Thank you. Our third question, how can the city reduce the impact of increased utility rates on low-income residents? We will begin with Ms. Polian.
I've ran utilities for 20 years, so I'm pretty familiar with the options that you can have. We have to make sure that whatever we do, we automate, but meaning that we can't give one discount here, et cetera. So we got to make sure that it is administratively possible. But what you can do is build in different rate structures for our fixed income folks, which often are elderly. You can adjust your tiers. We have higher tiers that, I don't know if you guys don't know, and I'm not going to drag you through that boring mess of weeds, but there are a lot of things that you can do with your utilities to subsidize for those folks that need it. I can certainly list it out. The reality is you can build that into your ordinance at any time. You have to make sure that we are fiscally solvent when we do that. I'm concerned honestly about our utility funds. Hypothetically though, we've got different structures for income-based, we've got different things for people that have high water bills, you can average it. There are a lot of opportunities you can take to help with the utilities. But we have to make sure that we're managing these utilities appropriately first, and then that hopefully will bring those rates down.
First of all, when you say utilities, I presume you're talking about electric, gas, telephone, and of course water. Really, the city is the only, the only authority with the water. The state has regulators to take care of gas and electricity. So we really don't say yes, not to say no, other than get up on your high legs and scream when they're going to pass another increase with the state regulatory bodies. But you know, if the water department is managed properly, managed efficiently, and I do believe it is, it's kind of a fixed cost issue in terms of somebody's got a pecking in order to keep water running and sewage going down the pipes. So it's, you can cut, you can slice and dice that however you want it. You can give people on the low end of the scale a real rate and you can charge the people on the upper end, the commercial, more per tap or more per gallon or more per unit. So you're just pushing that around. I don't know that that's a real good idea. I can see it has a lot of implications for the spectrum. In other words, if you're paying at the top rate right now and all of a sudden your rate goes up 25% because you want to lower the, lower rate 10%, you're going to create some commotion, I guarantee you. But I think we've got to make sure that the utility is managed well, it's efficient, and economical. And other than that, the only thing we can do is encourage people to use less water, be conservative, and just reduce their consumption.
One of the key drivers on utility costs is the MSO plan.
This is a thing that should have been a five-phase project over eight years. It's now a two-phase over three years. In the past week, it's come out that 10 years from now, we're all going to be paying 75% more for utilities. Every single year between now and 2042, there's been a bigger raise in utility costs. I think we can slow down the MSO plan. There's a vote on it on Tuesday. I think we could look at it and say, "Hey, I don't mean to do this for a couple of years. Maybe we split it, maybe we focus next year on utility tax relief." When I initially got into this race, I was sitting on my friend's porch and we were talking about the affordability of town. And he literally showed me on his phone, lifelong, like his financial thing to make sure, like if somebody scanned you, went off because it thought utilities had gone up so much that he was being scammed. People are, I'm telling you, one of the things I hear as I go around town all the time is a lot of people who say this town is unaffordable. And as a city commissioner, you need to look at and say, "When we do these large projects, what is the effect going to be on the community? Can they afford it?" And I believe the answer right now is no. In that, it's important to have these large infrastructure projects, but they have to be spaced out with the affordability of the community in mind.
And utilities question. Yes, we've got measures in place to go ahead and help folks with utilities. And one of the things we talked about in our last meeting, we're about, one of the utilities is instituting even more plans. I know that the Commissioner's efforts have brought it up and we all agree with that. Bob is frank on that, that we're kind of, it can hold in a lot of the time because we've got a lot of state contributors to utilities and water in particular. A lot of that is making sure that we are using our assets the best we can. And that's part of our asset management plan that we've instituted since I've been on the commission. Which its goal is to map out all of our assets and all of our infrastructure, make sure what stage is in and if it needs to be repaired or replaced, and how to structure that, how to stage that. And a part of that plan is kind of what we've been doing with MSO projects and other plans, as well as our water treatment plan and our wastewater treatment plan and our plants that has been not necessarily taken care of. It hasn't been looked at in a while, so it needed some love. But that's all part of making sure we can address these things before they become catastrophic, which no one wants. So, and Bart, you know, kind of speaking to my greater part of the budget, making sure that, you know, we go ahead and make room for those things that we care about. So I know that, you know, the costs are going up and that it's a struggle for everybody. It's a struggle for me, I live in this town, but we're doing our best to go ahead and make that better for everyone.
Thank you. Our fourth question, is the city's budgeting process adequate to meet the city's needs? If you think cheap changes need to be made, what is your plan for changing the budgeting process? We will begin with Mr. Schum.
The budget is, as I suggest to people, is written in code. I can't understand it the way it's written, and I don't think many people in this room could. And that's not fair. That should be, we should be able to open that up and read it just like an income statement or balance sheet and understand where the numbers are and where they're taking us. There's more loopholes and ins and outs in that budget and it gets extremely difficult to find out where you're at. I'm pretty much in favor of a line item budget that you can look at what it costs to run Sports McMillian Lawrence or what it costs to run City Hall. I mean, why can't you walk through right down the line and look and see what each item is and if it's over budget or under budget, as you call it, along through the year? I think everybody could understand that, but the way it's written out, the way it's presented, it's a maze. You just can't get there. So I would hope to improve that by working with the staff and suggesting ways to improve that so that the average person can understand it. I mean, we talked about transparency, that's opaque, in my opinion, in that budget, so it needs a lot of work.
Mike?
Yeah, we're just talking, we're just talking about the numbers since the pandemic of 2020. Since 2020, the budget has doubled. Capital projects have gone up by 445%. Debt has gone up by 225%, 208% actually. Property taxes have gone up 40%, utilities at least 25%. When I, and we've had discussions in some of these forums about, you know, what are some ways to look at this a little bit differently? One, you know, I presented here, I just said about the MSO plan. But we look at like the city of Wichita, not like a small, small place in the middle of Kansas, they have a capital improvement plan that's 10 years long. I just think when we look at the budget, we've done, it seems like every road in town has shorted on the time. I would say the overarching, the overarching thing that I just, I have a problem with the city officials, since the pandemic, we've just done too much too quick. You know, if you look at the roads on, like Walker versus Seuss, like these are all things that had to be done. Like a lot of parents are from Boston, I know it's like when a car goes into a pothole, it doesn't come back out. We weren't having that type of problem. We could have spaced this out to make it more affordable, to be able to lower the property taxes. And I know there's, with a 10-year capital improvement plan, there is uncertainty with that, but at least that plan in place would have made it more palatable for people to afford living in this town.
Mike?
You know, throughout the campaign, you know, I've talked about things like that. I've heard of, you know, a lot of the candidates talked about cuts. I've also heard them talk about core services, but I haven't really heard a lot of what they want to take off the table. The budget is an integral process with, there's a lot of give and take and things of that sort. So, and I especially haven't heard about programs that, you know, we've had successes in, like, you know, and our houselessness program, which is a part of our affordable housing program, also our housing policy. So with that, as I've told you guys, we've had successes that even Columbia is recognizing, that other regions are recognizing. So I hate for, you know, that to be a chunk of one. Also, part of that is also our arts and culture, that, you know, doesn't necessarily get put in those arts, you know, core services, which, you know, the city contributes to things like, like y'all already have, you know, that installation that was split, or Juneteenth, which they contributed to. Or, you know, extolling the virtues of some of our luminaries like Kevin Gohman, you know, who's been a director in town, or, you know, any sort of festivals or things like that. That's the kind of balance you have to make in the budget, and those are the kind of decisions you have to make. Those are things I funded in the past and I believe in and, you know, that I would continue to do in the future. But I also want to talk about, you know, kind of our state, of our city. I really invite people to look at our meeting from last Tuesday, where we went over like our state in terms of our bond rating and our asset management plan to go ahead and inform themselves. In terms of like relatively in the state, we're up there with like other places in Johnson County in terms of attractiveness to other companies and other people who want to go in and okay here. So we're doing well. So, and I just want to make sure that people will inform the cabinet or take one table.
I'm just going to come right out and say I was at the commission meeting on Tuesday and I felt gaslit. And that's because we're not in a good position. So to hear me say that we're not in a good position and to hear somebody else say we're in a great position probably feels like cognitive dissonance. But I'm ready, my 20-plus years, I have financial expertise in many cities in three different states. I'm conservative. When we talk about the fact that we've had a 40% increase in our, in our property taxes, everyone's homes are skyrocketing value, and we still have a 6.5% or, excuse me, $6.5 million deficit is reprehensible. That's poor budgeting, guys. Simple as that. When we talk about the actual process that occurs with the city, we do what's called a priority-based budget, which basically puts things into programs. I have done city budgets for two decades and I can't understand it. I've sent it to people that are smarter than me and they've got nothing. We need to bring it down to like the state budget for a line item budget, simple as that. As far as this year and how the budget was presented on July 8th, was the first public draft issued that was discussed with the commission, and by July 20th, they had to set their max rate. That gave one meeting for the public to give, one additional meeting for people in the public to give comment. We got to open it up much sooner. My hope is I can bring my expertise in the next budget session, if elected, and do it on the side and help educate people and we get started much sooner. Because everybody needs to be a part of this. This is the single most important document that the commission passes every year.
Thank you. Our fifth question, what types of commercial and industrial development do you see as most beneficial for both the tax base and for maintaining the character of the city, including a vibrant downtown? We will begin with Mr. Courtney.
Back in, back in June, I said at city commission, there's one position that's not filled right now, that's the Director of Economic Development at the city. If you look at the economic development page for the city, the forms there haven't been updated in almost two and a half years. So there's an aspect of what can we do as a city to attract people to come. And I think this position is very key. When I, when I wrote this position, my critique of it was, it read like somebody who could have a job at City Hall. I want somebody who is passionate about this community, who wants to go, who has a role to dance into Kansas City and the larger region. Because even if my idea of large water homes takes off and we're able to build 500, 600 homes, you know, in the next couple of years, where are people going to work? They're going to go to Speaker, they're going to go to Johnson County. I visited Wichita State about six months ago and on their innovation camp, established Wichita State, like they're bringing in large companies, they're bringing in, in their aviation town, like Boeing, Airbus, Cessna, all these companies like that. We should have an outreach. Like it is a shame that Hills moved their office from the PCF over to Oldham Park. That should have been here. There's plenty of people that are in my neighborhood who work at Hills, we should have, we should have had that option. But there are other companies, like you look at Garmin, you look at SS&amp;C, AOC, H&R Block, all of these good Block, all of these good marquee Kansas City companies should have some type of presence here for Lawrence. And I just, I think there's an aspect of a public-private partnership between us and groups like the Chamber and EDC, but there's also, we just need somebody at the city who has a deep rolodex, who will go out, lock on doors, and will make this happen so that people can, so kids can start a career here, so that they can get in this community, and that when they come out of high school and college, there's rich entrepreneurship opportunities for them to get started.
Well, first off, I got to call something out. With the budget process this year, we got started in December of last year, and then we had a meeting in, I believe, February, had another meeting in April, and had another meeting in June, and had another meeting, I think maybe it was in there, had another meeting in September. So, to say that we weren't involved and didn't go ahead, you know, kind of invite the public to go ahead and talk about the budget and the agenda, this is what we live, we're facing a 6.6 million dollar deficit. I just want to go ahead and point that out. And as well, I know the city of Tepeka was facing a double-digit deficit as well. Other places in this country were facing double-digit deficits. City of Denver was facing a $200 million deficit. So, it's, we're not alone in this. It is a product of our time and inflation and coming out of pandemic and everybody is trying to figure it out as well. So, I just want to go ahead and provide a little perspective. Also, in terms of economic development, I want to continue to do what I've done before, which is one of my goals, because, you know, I do want to encourage, you know, more businesses to go ahead and locate here. That's part of why I support the meeting and incentives. I mean, I don't necessarily want to support incentives all the time, if they want to go ahead and locate here, but I wouldn't have to go ahead and appreciate that. But I want to make sure that we have, they go ahead and grease our commercial tax base because that relieves the burden on residential when we do that, because the commercial tax pays twice as much into residential tax. Also, I encourage like small business development and entrepreneurship, because I believe that helps out your community even more because those are the people that support softball teams, baseball teams, churches. My dad was a small business guy. That's how I grew up. And I want to encourage more development pockets around town, like in North Lawrence, West Lawrence, East Lawrence, you know, along Sixth Street, 23rd Street. I want to make sure that we're versatile and we can go ahead and support our community.
We're not going to go back and forth on the budget, of course, in the pudding, simple as that. As far as economic development, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, there is the component, we need people to have higher paying jobs here as well. We've got a lot of retail, a lot of restaurants. Those are great for our college students, our high school students, but we need the higher paying wages that provide benefits, health insurance, retirement, that sort of thing. That can come in any way. We've got every demographic in terms of skill set. We've got manufacturing, we've got professionals, we've got people coming out of one of the best universities in the area that can be directly into your professional-type careers. How do you, smart, how do you attract that? Obviously incentives assist with that. You don't give incentives unless the cost benefit is there, meaning if the city actually benefits more, you keep track of how those incentives continue to progress, you hold their feet to the fire, you can take the abatement if that's what it is the way. There's a lot of opportunity there. As far as finding a professional to do it, we've got the Chamber and the EDC, and I think a little bit of the city involved in it. I've worked with what I would call probably, was probably top five economic development professionals. When I was down in Lake City, we were bound to double, and we were a little larger than Lawrence at the time, and you have the right individual that is entrenched in economic development, they know it's, it's an art, it's nice to watch, they know all the players, not just the area, the entire country and internationally. So, we can look at that as well. A lot of opportunity here, so I look forward to it.
So, retail and commercial, retail, commercial and industrial. Retail will follow housing growths. More roads you have, more supermarkets you have to have, more car stores, et cetera, et cetera. So, building up our housing stock will imply that we will need more retail. So, that will take care of itself if we get home building underway. In terms of industrial, that's the engine that drives everything. High-paying jobs that are in the community on a permanent basis is what affords people to live here, shop here, and create some families. So, it's important to go after industrial development, and I would say that's the most important effect. So, we are running out of industrial land right now. We can go out and hit, some of these big companies come here, but if you don't have land for them, they're going to go right down the road. So, right now, we're about hanged south on our industrial development land, and we're going to have to find some new land to recycle for industrial development. So, that's going to take place here very quickly, and I hope it does, because otherwise we're beating the, beating the dead horse, so to speak, with trying to find somebody to locate. I am in favor of using incentives for the right, for industrial development, because they do bring to the community substantial jobs. I would recommend that the jobs have to be at least market for better in paying, that the investment has to be substantial in the plant and equipment, and that there needs to be a clawback provision in the event that they don't fulfill their obligations up in the contract. So, I think that's a good healthy system, and it should provide a really important in terms of extra tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, given the political climate and budget issues, do you think the city should hold fast to the diversity, equity, and inclusion commitments that are in the current strategic plan or main provisions? Please explain your answer. We will begin with Mr. Littlejohn.
So, yeah, it's, the times we live in are very interesting, I should say, at the very least. And I definitely should be looking particularly at myself as being a person of color and noticing what other persons of color are dealing with, or people who are part of underrepresented or marginalized communities. So, I definitely want to make sure that we retain who we are as Lawrence, and that means looking out for each other, that means looking out for your neighbors, and that means being a community. Now, not going to lie to you, state and federal government are making that difficult even more difficult each and every day. So, what we're trying to do is navigate that while still maintaining funds to go ahead and get to things that our community needs, to go ahead and be a part, to provide for our neighbors, to look after each other. And I think that our staff, like Dr. Ferris Mohammed, and then also Cory Wallace, have been handling all and helping us navigate that path, and we're going to try to do that and balance that as best we can, because ultimately, we don't want what is coming down from up above on both levels to go ahead and change the way we do business and the way we provide for each other. So.
I'll just ask you for Christine if we could hold the applause until the end of this. Christine, please.
DEI, I don't understand why it's such a triggering word for some people. But we will always be inclusive, we will always encompass diversity, we will always be equitable. That's who we are. We, our history, as I say, we've always been on the right side of history, and we will remain on the right side of history. When we start talking about policy decisions and the federal government threatening to cut off federal funding, that's, that is a topic, I think it's reprehensible, but the state's going to hear what the feds do, simple as that, and so we might be stuck losing some federal money. My biggest concern is, will we outprice somebody, especially someone on fixed income, because we're losing federal funding that we were anticipating? I don't know, we're Title VII and Title IX. As far as I know, removing DEI committee policies won't affect your Title VII and Title IX status. We do not discriminate, that's just not who we are. That is a culture that needs to remain. As far as whether we have to take it out of the policy with the city or out of our strategic plan, I, I think we can work around it and still provide protections. But really what it comes down to is, this is a community of great people, but some people don't do the right thing, and we know that, so we want to keep it in policy as much as we can, but we can't with federal funding. So, you know, we're going to work around it, but we're always going to be on the right side of history. That's who we are.
You hit a hot button with me on this one. I'm down in the corner on Sunday morning from 12 to 1, every Sunday, waiting the Ukrainian flag. If you drive by, you'll see me tomorrow. I'm sick and tired of getting pushed around and rolled by this administration that tells us what to do. We started this community on helping the oppressed, helping slaves get away from their masters. It's in our DNA, we understand up to these people, you can't get rolled, you can't say, okay, we'll do it, they'll be back 30 weeks later telling you to do something else, crawl around in the pavement. It's just ridiculous. If you don't stand up and resist, they're going to, they're going to roll you up every time they get a chance. I saw recently where Lawrence and Douglas County were the only two entities that are tagged with, well, by the administration, I'll say it nicely, as being out of conformance with their ideas. I say, great, that's who we are, we've always prided ourselves as being individual and unique. Why the hell give up and roll over on that right now? So, therefore you can see, I've gotten to staying with the program. It's our program, it's our city, and we are the people who want to stand by that and make sure it continues the way it is.
Mike?
I think we need to open our political imagination and understand that this isn't a different someone else. When you see, when you see what's happening right now in Chicago, where Black Hawk helicopters are going over apartments, and there's zip time and children. We are a blue dot in a big red sea, and eventually when something happens at geopolitical level or at the national level, we will be targeted. And so the question becomes, what do we do with that? What did the city do previously? They tried negotiating against themselves. That's terrible business. What we should be doing is reaching out to cities like Manhattan, cities like Wichita, Antioch, and then forming a coalition of people who are willing to fight back. I don't want Washington bureaucrats coming here and treading on us at the local level. Yeah, no, I get right up, actually, I have this one too. So, going forward, as a city commissioner, I'm going to work with our local leaders that are in Topeka, our state leaders, ones in other cities, and come and put together a coalition to be able to fight back. The only thing this administration understands is power, and we need power to fight that up, to, to fight for the people in this community who don't have a voice.
Thank you. Our seventh question, are you satisfied with the efforts the city has made to improve the environment, such as the plastic bag man? Why or why not? What else should the city do to support environmental sustainability? We will begin with Ms., we'll begin with Ms. Polian.
We have done a great job at our green initiatives, honestly, with the electric buses, we're looking at electric trash trucks, plastic bag man. We are very cognizant of the climate change. I believe in climate change. There's folks that don't, okay? I do. We've got to continue our efforts to do it. My preference, so when we talk about, for example, electric buses, those are incredibly rough on our roads, which means we're going to have to replace them twice as fast, and everyone needs access to those roads. So, what I would prefer to see is that we actually make it more possible for our residents to be more green. Maybe through some tax credits, save money on very expensive vehicles, save money on roads, turn those over, give them to the residents. Maybe they can, maybe we put in more charging stations, we can get EV going a little more. We have regular buses, but all of our residents have EV, it would be great. That's what I would prefer to see, but we've got to remain diligent on protecting our climate. Let's make sure we've got our money in order, and then let's go hard on green initiatives.
I'm pretty well satisfied in the way the city is aiming towards trying to make this more affordable in terms of ecology. I did listen to one woman who kept me occupied for about 10 minutes listening to her gripe about she doesn't have a place to put her garbage, because there's no plastic bags. And I thought, God, I can't get over that, this is going to stop that big deal. But anyway, I listened to her reply, thanked her for comments, and went on. That would, that would maybe want to reverse the wall. But anyway, that, and you know, there's, I drive an EV, so I'm pretty sensitive to our greenhouse gas situation. The city's putting on a EV show on the 12th, I think it's the 12th of October in the park, people with any kind of EV product to come down, demonstrate to the rest of the community so that people can learn from it. Like, that's a good comparison, because people can ask owners about EVs, like about one to seven, they say, well, when's the battery going to wear out? I said, there's been no degradation on my battery at all. They go, wow, I thought it would be worn out by now, he'd have to buy new one. There's all kinds of information that can, can enable that discussion with those people. But I think the city's doing a pretty good job. I would want to keep my ears and eyes open for other things we can do, and would be of interest to the community, try to put that in play.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yep, I also agree, the city is doing a pretty good job on this, and to continue with what Christine was saying, we have fast-type chargers that are outside located on I-78. So, it'd be interesting to bring some of those in town. We have charging spots that are over on Mantra Street, but those are what's called the type two, so they're a little bit slower. So, it'd be interesting to get, especially around, as we have in retail, say, hey, there are people are coming from Johnson County, we're going to have some of these fast charging options for you, for the larger cars. I mean, there's a couple of other things that people, you know, may not know about. Over in Prairie Park, where I live, the nature center, I mean, the nature center has solar panels on it, but they also just put a huge array on the elementary schools. So, we have all of this rooftop availability, which I would support grants for, for that for municipal buildings and to help the school board with that. I have solar panels on my house too, so, you know, it's nicer now than, you know, energy is a lot cheaper during the summer. But yeah, no, I feel like we are doing a good job in that. And then, then one other thing I was just writing and thinking about the other night too, is, you know, there may be people who want to come to a town that has more green energy than, than other towns. So, something we could do to compare us with not only our neighbors, but to say, hey, how much green energy are we generating from a residential perspective? I think you could get the competition, the competitive juices going if we compare ourselves to, you know, state company, we could add something like that. And so I would be down for doing that type of study in the future.
Yeah, I think we've done a great job, and we're in a unique position in the community relative to the rest of Kansas. We tend to be in the forefront of a lot of those things, single-use plastic bag, it's a great success, as well as our sustainable capital projects policy, which kind of covers all of our infrastructure and equipment, moving us to that sustainable level as well, using standards of vision, which is for infrastructure, which is a qualification for infrastructure, making sure it's sustainable that way, and LEED certified, which is making sure it's sustainable that way. So, and I would add our development code, which our new updated development code has sustainable measures in it as well, that, you know, as I said before, or I said before in the forum, since it's been in action since April, it'll be interesting. in the forum, since it's been in action since April, it'll be interesting to see the projects that come through and then, you know, kind of where they lie in terms of sustainability or other factors and what works and what doesn't. It's still in the process where we're trying to go ahead and figure out exactly what we want to keep and what we want to move on from. So that's, one other thing I wanted to go ahead and mention as well is like earlier this year, the city of Lawrence along with other municipalities had a determination filing with Evergy in terms of their plant that they wanted to go ahead and construct in other parts of Kansas, other plants. And the reason why we did that is to gain leverage for the Lawrence Energy Center. And kind of the things we asked Evergy and the KCC for were things like charging stations, was we also asked for Evergy to include a battery component at the Lawrence Energy Center for future alternative energy. We also asked for, you know, credits for people who want to add silver or, you know, to offset the sort of vehicle traffic, multi-vocal situation. So we are putting ourselves out there and we're advocating for our structures and our people here in terms of sustainability.
Thank you, everybody. Our final question. What topic would you like to address that you haven't had a chance to address yet? We will begin with Mr. Shum.
That is extremely easy for me because I'm very, very upset with the policy change to start to charge for using our rec centers. In 2012, when I was mayor, we promised the public that they would be free of use because of the funding mechanism that was used and that's from sales tax fund for recreation. There's plenty of money, it all worked out fine, but the center's in that ballot's projections from its original conception. There's no need to do this other than they just are looking for a half million dollars that wouldn't fit in any other egg hole in the budget number. So they came in and placed a million and a half dollars of the deficit spending at the park, the recreation department, while other departments didn't have near that kind of deficit makeup. And then it was an easy target to say, well, these people are using this, we'll just start charging. You're really paying a tax on tax at that point because every time you buy a loaf of bread, you're, a slice of that sales tax goes into that fund to keep that recreation facility going. So then to add a fee to play is definitely a tax on tax. Anyway, it's not fair. I promised it, the commission promised it, and I think by virtue of us at that time, the city promised it. I think it's really, really bad to go back on our word and the city's word. It doesn't endure any kind of loveliness amongst the city and the citizens. If I'm elected, I will work to repeal that. I think it's been so much, so many people, so many people are using that as part of our community service. So I'm upset about it and I'm going to keep working, elected or not, to reduce it down to a free place. Thank you.
Mike, Bob, it's still on my thunder. I absolutely agree with that. The, when you look at what the rec centers, at the beginning of the year, there was a $500,000 budget gap and by the end of the year, all we had was fees. The fees are going to be $12 per person and if you're somebody, if I'm Crunch, Genesis or Planet Fitness, there would be a $9.99 plan. I'm really worried about the, aren't the rec centers even going to be there in a couple of years due to these fees? And so for me, like, and so throughout this campaign, like I tried to have an IC space campaign, I talked about the water homes and the budget. But for me on the rec center side, back in 2021, the nature center was on top of the block. My wife, me, our neighbors, we came together, we argued passionately at the city commission and they kept the nature center. As part of that, we worked with the city and said, hey, we will raise all of the money. We'll create this thing called a friends group. We'll be able to make this happen. And we tried working with them for an entire year, got absolutely nowhere and it was sort of, you know, just walked out of the rug. So through this campaign, I presented this idea of a friends group again to make up this difference. And we have examples of friends groups that work. We're literally sitting in one right now. The friends group for the library raises $500,000. So from the city's perspective, rather than looking at what's in their master plan, which says, I'm a friends group, I'm a conservancy, find ways to raise money from the community. What we did was just put these out there. If I'm elected to the city commission, they'll receive it at the beginning of December, I would work to find a way to push this up, sorry, because it starts on January 1st, but I would make it my mission as city commissioner to also remove these fees going forward just to make sure that as a community, we continue to have this jewel available because if we don't, I really worry about the solid state of rec centers.
I don't really have, I'll cover some stuff, I guess. In terms of the fees, I mean, you know, that conversation is possible, but also kind of, what I talked to earlier, the budget, you know, making it work with the budget as well. And in terms of fees themselves, I will say that we made it free for kids and folks that might have financial hardships. So we did that to have those far ups as well. And as well in terms of the friends group, that is also part of the budget. As folks here know what the library's went through, it took quite a while for them to go ahead and build this up and to make it as strong as it has been. So that's kind of more long-term project to kind of, we need really make sure that we get that going. So there are other points as well that are economic drivers that are, you know, involved in it. But really I want to make sure that, I think overall in terms of the city, never let it be a problem. And I think more economic development in terms of commercial, making sure that, I hate to hardline it again, making sure we are supporting our job creators in terms of Core, EDC, KUIP, the Chamber, Haskell, Peace, the Tech and the KU Small Business Development Center, to go ahead and give those opportunities for folks in our, in this town to go ahead and start their business, maintain their business and grow their business. I think that's crucially important because that helps us have flexibility and resiliency, especially considering the environment we're in. I, I, I'm hopeful that we can go ahead and continue those measures and also add some new ones to go ahead and make sure that folks have those opportunities.
I will, I will just echo what everyone's said as far as rec fees at least, Bob and Mike. I'm opposed to charging the residents. I think the, the juice will not be worth the squeeze. I think we're going to alienate a lot of the community and we're not going to get as much money as we believe we will. And enforcement and administration alone will be a cost. I'm opposed to it. What I do want to see is we've got just on the sports pavilion alone, we've got a lot of associations that go in there, the tournaments, et cetera. I am not in favor of people being able to make money through the use of a public building, which these associations do. They, I mean, they're big moneymakers in fact. So I want to look at that. The one thing I do want to bring up that, you know, as we see all of this construction, everything's getting pushed through, the MSO building moved from five or six spaces down to two and these dances, lowest cost of ownership. I want everyone to know that every single city aspires for lowest cost of ownership. That's like in the no kidding category, right? I'm going to give you an analogy though of what we are currently doing. I want to have $50,000 of landscaping done at my house right now. I know that if I get $50,000 in landscaping today, it's going to be cheaper than if I spread it out over 10 years because present value of the money is more than future value of money. Econ 101. However, I can't afford $50,000 of landscaping today. And that is what we need to be looking at. We need to look at affordability, not if it's going to be cheaper today. Every city does that and we are not and I'm concerned about it. So I want to bring that up as something that I have brought up. Thank you.
Thank you to the candidates for participating in our forum today and thank you to everyone for being engaged in this political process. I'll now turn the microphone over to Jeanne Klein for our closing remarks.
So I just want to remind everybody about your deadlines. If you have moved, which maybe maybe you have not, but if you have moved, you need to change your address no later than Tuesday, October 14th and register to vote with a new address, okay? The first day to send out mail ballots is on October, Wednesday, October 15th and October 15th is also the first day when advanced voting begins. We would like to encourage people to please vote in advance at the courthouse or at the Two Stedelijk Douglas County Election Offices because we can no longer trust the US mail to get things to the election offices on time. Yes.
Is the courthouse open for voting now? I thought we have to go to 23rd in Louisiana for the office there.
We have to go to 23rd? Okay, she's right, never mind. Sorry. Yeah, so you can start advanced voting on October 15th. I encourage you to do that. The last day to request a mail ballot is October 28th. And of course, if you love the tradition of voting in person at the, on election day, that is November 3, or November 4 is the general election, but the last day for in-person advanced voting is November 3, okay? And then the rule is that they will accept mail-in ballots no later than November 7th. So that's why again, we're asking people to vote in person, vote in advance instead of a mail-in ballot. That's just a recommendation. Thank you very, very much, everyone, for attending and we really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.